Called this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order, May 31st, 2017. Before we begin, I know that at the end, my fellow commissioners will get to say that this is the first day that we're in our new chambers. I would like to congratulate Bobby Doyle, his work crew, everybody that's here. Really appreciate all of the work that's been done. They can elaborate later. I just figured I'd get in the first word before anybody else did. All right? If you'd all please rise, come over to solid meditation and pledge their flag. Thank you.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consent and approval, Renetta. You look so far away now, I'm sorry.
Get the megaphone out.
Yes.
We have seven exonerations for $1,033.01. Vouchers, General County, $14,450.10, 911, $2641.44. Chestnut Ridge Park, $12,9093. Camp Muffley, $3406.33. Mason-Dixon Park, $312.55. Recreation Levy, $7588. Assessors' valuation, $5,061.45. Star City TIP, $578773. Mon General TIP, $11503798. University Town Center TIP, $25705763. Purchasing card vouchers for General County, $32,595. 911, $1,114.10. Camp Muffley, $664.95. Assessors' valuation, $406.20 for a voucher total of $491,992.27. We have a transfer from payroll to general fund of $985.95. A budget revision for emergency management moving $1,000 from 7/11/14 to 7/11/16. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Board of zoning appeals for the Western Planning District, Planning Commission, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mon County Board of Health. Fiduciary orders for May 31st, 2017. And you have a state in the Mary J. Eddy Estate petition to appoint the sheriff administrator that you'll need to take separately.
Yes. All right, let's go ahead with the fiduciary. Move for approval, second. They're properly moved in second for approval, all in favor. Aye. Let's move on to the estate Mary Eddy. I did ask, this is to be the sheriff as administrator of a request, so. Move for approval, second. Been properly moved in second for approval, all in favor. Aye. Thank you. Are there any introductions of new employees?
No.
Hearing none. We'll open for comments from the public. We're open. Please step forward. You're the first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jeanette Gidley. I'm the Senior Director for WVU Medicine Children's, and I just came to thank the county commission for their vision and partnership with the Black Bears in creating the stadium. I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have a concert planned to benefit Children's Hospital on the 11th, and it will be the first of its kind, and hopefully will set a precedent for this community. With that, you know, we've asked for support from the commission if possible. If you will consider supporting this venture with us, Children's Hospital is, as you know, a nonprofit, and we were wondering if maybe you might consider helping us in some fashion with the expenses related to this concert.
Is there any specific level of support that you're requesting?
Actually, we've had conversations, and if you would consider supporting the cleanup, which is around $3,000, or some portion of that, we would be very grateful.
I don't know what the precedent is, or...
We would normally put it on the agenda.
We'll put it on the, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we will be happy to put this on the agenda for you on next Wednesday.
Right.
I appreciate your consideration. Again, thank you for your vision, for your partnership, and for supporting the children in every way you do in this county. Thank you very much.
And I can certainly comment that I think this probably is an expense that we would look in toward in regards to the fund that we set aside for putting on events at the county ballpark, so.
And in case you don't know, the acts that we'll be performing that day on the 11th is Steve Argari from Journey and the Davison Brothers, our own community band, and there'll be barbecue and a lot of fun that day, so we hope you can join us as well.
Thank you.
I just want to say, this is, as you said, this is the first big event that we've been wanting to do for the community, and we want to set a precedent that, as Commissioner Sakora said, we have funds put aside that we did, so if there is community events like this, we want to provide for it. So, we're looking forward, and we'll discuss it, and you won't have to show up next Wednesday, but we will put it on the agenda.
Thank you very much, and we're very blessed that Children's is the first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Colleen. Though you said we don't have any grants, but...
I do not have any grants today.
That's okay. All right. Thank you. We will next add the presentation of contributions to Scott Run's park restoration. Let me elaborate a little bit. Most of us as commissioners are involved in projects in the community. We try and do things that will be of benefit. This is something that I looked at, actually, before I became a commissioner, that there was a park in Scott's Run, in Osage, that used to be used very heavily by Shaq and other individuals, that has had the misfortune to have a hole blown in the middle of it, if you will, by way of the drainage that was established a long time ago, and so we're looking to do something. I don't see, Nick is not here, but anyway, we've had an engineer, we have several of the park board here, which I'm happy to see. If the park board would please, that are representing, Al, and everybody come forward if you, if you would. So what we've been doing over the course of the past couple of years, we've been writing grants and asking for individual contributions, and so today we have some checks to give to you to begin the process of cleaning up this park so Al Anderson and I can play kickball. That's what I promised him. We're going to have a kickball in torn, oh, I do see, thank you. So, let's have 4-H up first, if you don't mind. And if you'd all identify yourselves, please. Yes?
I am Patricia Thomas, the president of the park, Scott Run Park and Recreation.
And I'm a board member, and Lou here, who is our...
Historian.
Historian of Scott's Run, and we want to thank you for just blessing us today with being able to get started, and you know, I wish we could find some big, big organization that would take that pipe out of there. If we can get that pipe out of there, and you know, the park wasn't only, just like you say, for Scott's Run, you know, everybody, you know, the football players from, that came and practiced, all the softball players, all the picnics are over there, but it was never for just Scott's Run, it was for everybody. So, we need to maybe get that part going again, you know, for the kids and all.
We're on our way.
And we appreciate you.
And I might add, I might add that it's supposed to be a memorial park, basically also for the coal miners that were killed back in 1942, 56 miners, and I have a tee-shirt that has the names on it, but anyway, that's important to get a memorial put up there to honor them that died back in World War II.
Our first presentation is 4-H. If you can identify yourselves, please. Yes?
We're working on, yeah, we're working on this. We couldn't knock the post down.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Mary Kearns, I'm the 4-H Program Assistant in Montague County, and Becca would like to send her, she's sorry that she couldn't be here today, but I just wanted to do a little shout out here before we have our presentation. The 4-H program would like to thank the commission for your work with camp, Camp Muffley, on our big log cabin, so we really appreciate that. We have camp full, our younger camp, we have 175 youth attending this year, we have over 100 at our older camp, and our day camp is filled already, so it's going to be a wonderful summer, and again, we really appreciate your support with that. I do have with me today our president of our Leaders Association, Deb Dean, and she will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mary. On behalf of the Montague County Leaders Association, we would like to present $2,500 to you for your park. We feel that you're going to help the youth and everyone, and the commission has been so kind to 4-H that we would like to give back to our community. So, on behalf of the Montague County 4-H Leaders Association, we'd like to give you that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, I would also like to thank the commission. You, I have been involved with 4-H for a long time, and you have been so kind and generous, and our program has grown tremendously, and a lot is in part of the support that we get from our community and our commissioners. Thank you.
We next have Patricia Watson of the Weldon Foundation, so BB and T. Better stay up there, Al, if you want the money.
Yeah, somebody's got to collect the check.
Don't stay there, you don't get the money.
Thank you, Ed, and thanks to the commission for coming to the Weldon Foundation for this grant. So, my name's Patricia Watson, I'm from BB and T. We are both the trustee, and I am on the trust committee for the Weldon Family Foundation. It is a nonprofit foundation created in 2012 to benefit nonprofits in Montague and Preston County. It accepts grant applications from any nonprofits in those counties twice a year, and we are pleased, very pleased, to present Scott's Run with $5,000 in matching funds for the commission. Thank you so much for bringing the project to our attention.
Thank, thank you so much.
Think it'll make a big difference in the community there.
It will, thank you so much, and you will help very much.
Now, we don't have anybody here from the Lynch Foundation, but the Lynch Foundation, John Lynch, also wishes to present the park with another check, four or $5,000.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you.
Lastly...
And lastly.
Lastly, our county commission wishes to give you this check, and keep in mind that there is also another check, another available funds of $2,500, beginning July 1st.
Thank you.
In addition to this check, for $4,472.58, don't ask me why, but $58 cents. And Al, you can say whatever you want.
Well, we thank you for that, and, you know, we've been out there for, I don't know how many of you have been to our museum, but you have to come to our museum and see what we have done, you know, just to make sure that we keep Scott Run alive, and especially Osage and that park, and as Mr. Baraka said about the 56 miners, that's right at the park there, and we eventually sometime want to do a monument there for them. But also, the lastly I will say, if you want to see a show tomorrow night at the Met Theater...
Yes.
Al's going to be there with his band, and playing with him 30 years ago, and be with the gospel group, you will see a show, so please come out. It's 7 o'clock at the Met Theater, I think it's only $5. If you need tickets, I think they'll just let you in, but you want to see, you want to see a show tomorrow night, come on down. Al has about 58 years of being on those stages, and it's going to be good. Hey, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, when I, when I first came to the first park meeting, I asked if they had a treasury, and they said, I believe Lou said that he had some $4,000, if I recall, in the treasury at that time. I told him, I said, "Okay, I'm going to try and get some money to do this project, but keep in mind, I'm spending your money." All right? So, let's see if we can't get, I know Nick's not here, Nick Webb is an engineer who has spent time looking at this project, maybe we can find other involved community individuals who want to come forward, perhaps a large construction company that likes to dig holes because apparently we can reroute the stream, and that will be the first step in getting this park back on its feet so that it can't flood again. So, that's hopefully our plans, okay? Thank you. Holly Childs.
Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning. Holly Childs, Montague County Development Authority. I'm actually here to give you a great piece of news this morning. I have with me Jeremy Paradise and Chris D. from Auction Mobility, and I'm not going to take their thunder on telling you about their project, but they are here to make a significant investment in Montague County, and we started working with, the development authority started working with Jeremy and Chris back in March, and this has been a very fast-moving project, but as it's evolved, we're very excited about it, and we think the commission will be too, so I'm going to introduce them and let them tell you about what their plans are for Mon County.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Hi.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Chris D., I'm a partner in Auction Mobility.
I'm Jeremy Paradise, nice to meet you guys.
So Jeremy founded the company, we're based in Boston, we're a software company that provides mobile and online bidding software to the auction industry. So if you think about the energy equipment that gets auctioned off on the platforms, where, you know, folks like in Texas are using us to auction off that equipment, fine art, Sotheby's is a client of ours, and what we're doing specific to Mon County, we're opening an office here over in Dent's Run Road. We are immediately filling 15 positions in that office, it'll be operational on Monday, so we're here to announce an opening and a growth opportunity in West Virginia, specifically in Mon County Morgantown. So, we want to say thank you to the development office, Holly's office, the governor's office, have all been very welcoming. The reason we chose West Virginia, we believe in the values of the people, the work ethic, and the cost of living frankly allows for a good balance in this, in this office opening, and for the people that we're going to be providing these jobs to. We'll have over 50 jobs within 12 months in this office. It will be our growth center globally. We are installed in over 21 countries, so we're an established small software startup company. I live in Pittsburgh, so it's an hour for me, and it's no problem. Jeremy just came in from Boston this morning, so it's no problem for him, and we're here to announce an opening and a growth opportunity because we're actively hiring right now. So, we wanted to thank you all for your hospitality and all the work that's been put into this initiative. It has gone quickly, and we're going to continue to grow quickly with, with this partnership, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Is there a way, since newspapers here, is there a way that if people wanted to contact you, or how they should try, since you have some positions open, I believe there'd be a great deal of interest, how?
Absolutely. So, email would be the best, I mean, I can provide my email and my cellphone.
That would be great.
If you wanted to do that offline, that's fine, or if you need me to do that publicly, it's either way. Okay, great.
Okay.
And just to, just to give you some description on these jobs.
Right.
Full-time jobs, full employment, full benefits, stock options, they're going to pay over $50,000 to $75,000 all in, so this is, this is a great opportunity. This isn't something that's, you know, one-way opportunistic, I think it's a great partnership with the people in the county, so.
The only thing, Jeremy, I would say is you just have to be careful because you're from Boston, you know, you have to be a Steelers fan, the New England Patriots are secondary, okay, when you're down. Thank you.
One quick, one quick question. What type of position or people are you looking for? What type of skill set?
You know, you know, there's not a demographic, I'm looking for character, work ethic, and aptitude.
So you'll train.
So, I, but they're inside sales positions immediately, it's how 98, 99% of software salespeople start their careers, out in Silicon Valley, or I've been in the industry for 20 years, so I started in an inside sales role just like the one I'm hiring right now. We're going to have customer service and project management, as well as web designers being hired out of the university likely CS program, but the roles, I'm interviewing right now substitute teachers, I'm interviewing folks that have worked in car dealerships and are looking to transfer into the industry, so we're casting a broad net, and we're hiring character, really, first and foremost.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Correspondence, Renetta. Have we any correspondence?
Yes, finally received a response from Dish Network in regards to the letter that we sent on the feasibility certification that we asked a market modification. They are pretty much saying that it's economically infeasible for them to be able to adjust their market modification, because it would be additional costs to them for equipment and adjustments to their current customers.
That is unfortunate. Any thoughts from my fellow commissioners?
Well, we do have, I saw yesterday, Preston County joined with us.
Yes.
On that. I'd still like to continue and pursue this, I mean, let's see if, you know, it's in the letters now to the, our federal representatives, and let's see if they can, you know, work something out. I mean, always, it's, the first answer is always, it's not feasible, but economically, but maybe there's something we can do to work with them on that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Do you want to put that before?
Yeah, I so move that we continue this process with Preston County and contact our federal legislator.
Second. Been properly moved in second to continue this effort, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Any other, Renetta?
Yes, received a letter from Visiting Homemaker Service. Do you want me to read it?
You can give a brief summary.
Okay. It's regarding the recent letter we sent for $30,000 grant for the upcoming fiscal year, it's just a letter of thanks. It's, that's pretty much it.
It's nice to know that you're appreciated. Is there any other correspondence?
No.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move to new business. Renetta, go ahead with the first item.
Consider approval of Montague County Health Department representative to the Montague County Abandoned Dilapidated Building Committee. Sean, do you want to?
Yeah, this came out of our meeting with the abandoned and dilapidated building committee, where they requested a representative from the health department to ensure compliance with the regs, so I was at the health department meeting last Thursday, and I made the request, and they've made an individual...
Todd Peroznick.
Yeah, Todd Peroznick is one of their, I believe he's an industrial hygienist, but they've made him available to the committee, and I know Todd, he would, I think he'd be a perfect, perfect fit for this.
We don't have a letter yet, do we need, we can't have a motion until we have the letter?
Okay. We need to speak up, they can't hear us.
Oh, well, we need a letter of, of their request, correct?
Well, it's our, it was our request to them, which I did via email, and when they answered, I forwarded to Renetta.
Yeah, I've had the email here.
All right, then we can go ahead with the motion. To go ahead and approve.
I motion to go ahead and approve Mr. Todd Peroznick as a member of the Dilapidated Building Committee.
Second. Then properly moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next.
Consideration of selecting a vendor to manage funds contributed by the Montague County Commission and its employees to health savings accounts as part of a new option open to employees for group health insurance effective August 1st, 2017. Believe we've discussed this at length in the work session last week.
Yes.
Had some options of local banks, national vendors, but we, I mean, I don't want to speak for you all.
Well, in our discussions, we talked about the local banks and then what they, the options that they brought to the table, and being that this is something that we're just starting out in, and we need as much ability by whoever vendor we choose, we discussed going with the Highmark partner so that, you know, we would, the employees would have the maximum amount of options and flexibility, and that's what we discussed, and I believe that that's who we would like to recommend as our vendor.
I so move that we go with Highmark for the first year.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to go ahead with Highmark in this first year as a vendor, all in favor? Aye. Aye? Thank you.
Now, one of the things I want to add, now, this doesn't preclude us at any time from going back to the locus, so if we can get the local banks that could be part of this to kind of up their game and bring some of the more, the capabilities to the table, we can, we can switch this at any time.
This is more a matter of convenience for the first year, particularly since we have just a few months before we're beginning this process.
And also, the other reason is because when we're moving to this system, there are going to be some questions, and we want to make sure that people don't make the wrong purchases, so this is going to monitor what's going on, so they do the HSA correctly.
Yes. Okay. Lastly?
Consideration of funding up to $5,000 towards an 88 accessible porch and ramp project for the McCurdyville Community Association.
We have set money aside for these particular projects, these individuals were in work session. Quite frankly, I was very impressed by the work that they have been doing on their own volition over the course of the last few years, so I think this might be a very good investment.
Move, go ahead.
And I certainly concur, they showed us a lot of evidence where the actual community is out there, got a lot of skin in the game, putting in time and hours, and all they really need is assistance, plus when you're talking about ADA accessibility, that is something that shouldn't be optional, so I agree that this was a worthwhile endeavor. So I'm sorry, Tom, didn't mean to interrupt your...
No, no, I was going to say, I just move that we spend the $5,000 towards the ADA accessible porch.
Up to $5,000?
Up to $5,000, yes.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to go ahead and invest up to $5,000 in this project, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Is there anything else, Renetta? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. I see some in the audience, but nobody's stepping forth, okay. We'll move to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Well, first, I was going to ask, Mr. Doyle, did you want to, I think, if you would be willing to talk a little bit and thank people before I say anything.
Oh, yeah.
They're here.
I have my guys here that have come to the first meeting, so I thought it would be nice to recognize all them that did all the work here to make this commission chamber. He is our facilities manager, and he helped me design this and order all the stuff, and Jay Eldred, who...
Yeah, stand. We'll make them stand.
Stand up, guys.
We'll make you stand.
So everybody knows who you are.
Maybe like these new chairs, but... So, Jay Eldred, who is our working construction foreman, who helped do all this work. Paul Castner, he's been with us probably about five years now, and I could say, you know, this guy's a carpenter, this guy's an electrician, they all do everything, so they do it all. And Dave Weber, who's been with us a few years here now, probably, I don't know how many of you, so, and John Holbert, who, these are the guys that constructed this. And also want to recognize Jeff Welsh, who did a lot of the IT work, and my guys worked with him to get all this in place. So these are the guys that made this possible.
We want to thank you, that's why I got my words in first, okay?
I understand, yeah.
Just so you knew, all right?
I just wanted to make sure that they all got their recognition here for the job that they did, so thank you, guys.
And much appreciated.
So anyhow, thank you, guys, I concur, really appreciate everything you've done. Every time we've had something where, hey, could you do, hey, could you do that, it's not, can you do it, it's, you know, how quickly they can do it, they did a really good job. We came in this morning, logged on, everything works fine, Jeff, everything works perfectly. I assume you guys can hear me, so it was a really good job. It's been a busy week, as I mentioned earlier, I was at a health department meeting last Thursday, and then last Thursday night, we also had the dedication of the, I know the school, the Suncrest Elementary had been in operations for six months, but they finally had the formal ceremony where they dedicated the school, and they had the officials from the state SBA office come up, and being that it was at the end of the school year, six months after the fact, there still was a very good turnout, and it was a, it was a nice, nice event. Obviously, we all know that this weekend was Memorial Day weekend, and I can't help but notice the flags all through Morgantown, and Tom, the Rotary, did a really good job. It was, it was a nice touch, the Memorial Day weekend. Yesterday, I finally had my tour of Mason-Dixon Historical Park, and it is a, I don't even know if you guys are aware of how big that park is, and over 300 acres, and JR took me through every acre of it, and, you know, he's just, I commend all the work that he's done, he's done such a great job out there. He's just, you know, I want to do this, and I want to do this, as we went through the whole park, so he's got a lot of vision, he might need some additional help from us in regards to just being able to keep up with the park, but it was, it's a really, it's a really nice park, and he's done a really good job out there. And that's really about it. Tonight, there's a Suncrest Neighborhood Association meeting, and might be interested, some people might be interested, the superintendent's supposed to give a presentation on what they're doing with the old Suncrest primary, apparently it's going to be used as a daycare, so...
I think that's a very good use.
And I know that was a big issue a couple months ago, so they're, they're going to do that presentation tonight, but that's all I have. Excellent. Tom?
Yes. Again, I also want to echo this word, this, this room is amazing, I mean, it really is, I mean, we could not believe it when we walked in here and everyone putting it together, and again, I call this Phase Two. The Assessors' Office was the first, this was Phase Two, Phase Three, we are looking at now moving the Tax Office up on the third floor, and then Phase Four will be then expanding And then Phase Four will be then expanding the county clerk's office. So we, this is all a process that we will be doing and trying to make it easier for the public to come in, and we do really appreciate that. Second, just for your information, we did say we're going to put it on the agenda next week, the use of the baseball park. When Jeanette talked with me, she said the cost is $3,000, but what I asked was going to be was $1,500, and I've already called Granville and asked them to match it. So they will tell us next week. So that's where I'm hoping that I would recommend the $1,500, and Granville would match it. And again, I hope we can get some more programs out at the baseball, because that was, it is a community Montague County ballpark to run events, and I'm really pleased we're able to do that. I do want public to know that sometimes when we do positive things like fixing the roads, and I appreciate the article, there will be some changes at Easton Hill. So I did want people to know that now. And I can't say enough to the Sheriff's Department, the people out there that you've been out there, really helping the individuals. Our problem is that many people use GPS, do not know that, come off the interstate, and they run into it. But the second week in July is roughly when they believe it'll be closing down. So I want the public to know now that they are aware that when we progress, you know, and we're, and everyone's one in another lane up on Easton Hill, there is some, you know, minor inconvenience. And hopefully, we will get this really done before the college students come back and school begins. And that's the goal. So I want to thank everyone along that lines. And the final thing is, I do want to thank, and I'm really excited to say this, Bobby Doyle and March Weston. We found, we had heard and we knew there was a time capsule on the Courthouse Square. Bobby was able to find it, and then it was dug up carefully. Now, I don't know why it was only for 20 years, but it was put in at the decade 2000. We have given it back to the United Way, and we'll decide what, you know, they'll decide. But I do want to thank March Weston, Bobby Doyle. That was one of the, we didn't know if it was going to work or not, Ed and I got this letter, and we said, after the fact that they started digging it up, but we did find it. And again, I want to thank you, and now, I just, I just really believe that this is just fantastic, this room, and then the next step of making one-stop shopping to have the assessor's office and the clerk, I mean, and the tax office on the same floor. Thank you.
And Ed, I forgot to mention one thing. I couldn't figure out why the paper was so big this morning. I guess all the delinquent tax listings are in there. So Perry, Kelly, thank you for the job well done. I mean, it's pretty expansive, and I don't think any of us are on it, so.
I hope not.
My father, rest, you know, he's resting in peace right now, but I assure you, if my name were ever on that list, I would be hearing from him. Hey, just saying. Last Wednesday was the business, business after hours that Chamber puts on Thursday. I did meet with Judge Clodges, Mark Ralston, and Perry Blain, our county clerk, on various issues. We, I represented commission on Memorial Day at the Memorial Day Parade in Blacksville, as well as the bridge ceremony that went on. You know, when you are, when you are a person who went through, these, both these young men that the bridges were named for lost their lives in the Vietnam War conflict, call it what you will, but, you know, this, this is something that touched me during my high school and collegiate years, and, you know, it's something that, you know, you, you don't really think about until all the memories come running back to you at that time when these ceremonies are held. We went last night, I and Mike Mills, to city council as a whole to present the project that we actually here, the, the construction going on outside on the plaza. And it was, I think, warmly received by all council members.